Alright, welcome everybody to Town Hall meeting number 105. It's July 9th, 2024. And today we are being joined by Vanessa, Amaya, Colleen, Daniel, Guillermo, Matthew, Mikasa, Philip, William. Thanks all for being here. A relatively small group, but I imagine more people will be dropping in over time. As you can see on the screen, it's an outline of the agenda for today. We start off with a couple of mentions. And then we'll have Vanessa sharing a bit about new GitHub repository. And then I figured two topics we, yeah, would be good to have a check-in on with the room. Would be real-life events and how we approach this as an ambassador program. And consent participation, because for the last, the second iteration, let's say, of the Q3 budgets, at some proposals, we just saw a really low number of participation. Wanted to, yeah, throw that to the room, basically, and see how we can go about that. After that, there's room for open topics. So yeah, don't hesitate to suggest those if you have them. Then, before getting started, a quick reminder on what the ambassador program is and what we do. We're a group of like-minded people that are in tune with the Singularity Net ecosystem mission and vision. And we have a wide range of self-organizing work groups, which you can join, and we're all aiming at contributing to the growth of the ecosystem. You can find all of these workgroups on Discord. There's a Getting Started channel that will get you started, so do hop onto our server. Then, three mentions before diving into the bigger topics. First of all, the holiday season is coming. And yeah, I just wanted to throw out a quick reminder to the, to the workgroups, basically. Yeah, to consider and get a plan on that. One example would be, right now, I know from Treasury Guild, they basically decided like, August, we're off. We're not going to do any calls, any reward distributions. That's also why I call it that, just so that everybody is aware of that. But I do think for, yeah, for all workgroups, it's good to just have a bit of consideration on some holidays and availability of people and what do you want to be holding weekly or, yeah, just how you want to operate during the holiday season, basically. Also, on the town halls, actually, there will be three town halls where I will not be present. I'll put those in the Ambassador General channel. I'll just make a, write a line when I'm not available. So somebody needs to step up there and host. It was quite nice last year. I mean, I have to watch it back instead of live, so that's a little bit less fun, but still, I think it turned out quite nicely. Right, then, on the Q3 budgets, a little status update. Earlier today, during governance workgroup, we managed to get the marketing proposal approved. The concerns were lifted, basically. Or lifted, clarified, and then the objections were withdrawn. And on writers' workgroup and strategy, we'll go through the consent round once more. And yeah, this is also what triggered me to put on the agenda item a bit later on about participation. And then something pretty new, I think about 15, 20 minutes ago, Major DeFi posted on the deep funding group. They're opening a data analysis circle. And yes, just wanted to point it out, if you're interested in collaborating in that circle, you can. Just check the deep funding channels either here on Discord or on Telegram. You'll find a bit of an outline what the tasks of the circle will be and what kind of people they are looking for. And yeah, there's also a form you can fill in if you're interested. That's it as far as mentions. Then moving to the first topic. I can open the floor to Vanessa on new GitHub repository.
Yeah, this is actually not coming from Archives workgroup. It's coming from the relatively new AI Ethics workgroup, just for clarity. So, alright, so yeah, as some of you might know, D-Work's days are kind of numbered. It's no longer being actively developed. And that means that in future, we might want to move away from using it as an ecosystem. And one tool that could be used instead is GitHub, which some of you will be familiar with and others maybe not. Recently, so the new AI Ethics workgroup, you know, we've not been in existence even for a whole quarter yet. We decided we wanted to set up a repo on GitHub to help manage our work. But the only existing GitHub organization we could find that was anything to do with SNET was the Singularity Net Archives one, which is where the Archives repo sits. And I think the Ambassador Gitbook sits there. And it didn't seem that appropriate for the Ethics workgroups repo. So we just went ahead and created a new GitHub organization called Singularity Net Ambassador Program. Just put a little link. So we've created that organization and the AI Ethics workgroup has created a repo on there and a project board. And we'll be working closely with Andre from Treasury Guild to try and derive some best practice on how to manage a project so that it can eventually connect directly with the Treasury system from GitHub without the need for D-Work. Because that's what's going to happen in the long run, I think. It feels likely that that's what we're going to have to do. So at the moment, we are still putting fund requests onto D-Work from the AI Ethics group, because that fits most easily with the Treasury system at the moment. But Andre's looking into how to move away from that. And some of the way that we manage our board is going to help with that. For example, we think that since we have quarterly budgets, we need quarterly milestones on our project board. And we're using some of the approaches that have been developed in Archives workgroups, such as, for example, ensuring that each issue that we have on the board is assigned to one person ideally, the person who is actually paid for it, not, for example, as you might do sometimes, the person who manages the issue. And, you know, using tags and labels that match those used in the Treasury system. So it all looks like it is going to eventually be able to work quite neatly together. And some recent updates to GitHub's API mean that we can now actually get custom column values and even custom status columns in the Kanban, in the sort of project Kanban board, which is really great for automation. So it's just interesting. So the idea with this organization is that probably at the end of this quarter, AI Ethics workgroup will write up a little one-pager about what we've learned in case it helps anyone else with how to manage a project via GitHub in a way that works for the Treasury system. And the other idea is that anybody who wants to can eventually create one, a repo for their workgroup or move the repo for their project to there. Obviously, you don't have to. For example, the Archives repo is probably going to stay where it is. And we know that R&amp;D Guild, Guillermo, I know you've got several repos and they sit in another organization, I think, and you might prefer to stay there, so that's cool. But if you want to move here, or if anybody wants to move here, you can. So if you want an invite to this new GitHub organization, you can DM me your GitHub account name, or you can put it in the doc that I'm about to post in chat. Depends how much privacy you want, basically. And what I'll do is I'll invite people as a member, first of all, and then we can tweak the permissions to enable you to do whatever you need to do. So yeah, that's about it. If anybody's got any questions, but yeah, that's it.
Awesome, thank you. Not so much your question, but a compliment. I mean, D-Work has been quite a struggle. It works. I don't know. Sorry, come again? You were a bit soft there.
I was like, yes, it works, but, I mean, I think quite a few of us will be glad to move away from it.
Yeah, it might be time. And I do think this is a, the first step would be really nice and also, yeah, helpful to other workgroups. Guillermo?
Just when I finish learning all the tricks about D-Work. But I totally support, I talked with Vani about this idea of the SNET Ambassador Organization on GitHub. So Vani, could you see this came through? I need to talk with Kisi and how we will handle operations. But I stand with what I mentioned to you that time. I think all of the guilds and workgroups should work under this organization and make things easier to follow, bring in transparency, and everyone will be able to to follow, yeah, issues, achievements, and then accountability when we figure out how to avoid D-Work. Maybe we can even link the repos we have in our organization without even killing our organization and to bring the last part of operations, or when we have things, like a pre-pro repo in hours, and then link a final project and guilds for the R&amp;D. And definitely, if we do this with the LATAM Guild since the beginning, it will be good, because we will have another case study to follow in parallel with the global ethics. So yeah, later I'll reach you, but we will need a call to go through this, Vani, but yeah, let's do this.
Oh, cool. I mean, I think a lot of the new groups that are working on GitHub might have things to say about how they're managing their board and sort of how they're managing their repo. And we should probably pool resources and come up with, and I see Colleen in the chat going, oh, if you want a crash course, I'm happy to help. So I think, yeah, we should all just get together and I'll create a doc and we can all bung some ideas in about kind of how-tos and tips and tricks that people found. But yeah, maybe towards the end of the quarter, maybe not immediately. Let's give it a chance and try and actually do it before we start telling other people how we do it.
Yeah, maybe, maybe do a workshop. Definitely, we can put that in the next quarter for the R&amp;D. And put that on the, yeah, put that on the pipeline of which, because next quarter with the R&amp;D, we're going to have the community involved in telling or voting on which proposal should be developed. So this one will be, yeah, one on the list, probably. And Colleen, if you want to, yeah, Colleen, if you want to reach and see how we put together, and if you want to lead that proposal, well.
And I think Archives would have some input as well, because like, because we don't like payment per hour. We've kind of developed slightly different ways of working, which Thibault is very patient with. But I think it's interesting, because I do think D-Work forces a certain way of thinking. It likes you to price tasks by the hour rather than by the task. And it makes you think differently, and it's not a way that I like. It's like piecework. I've said it before, I'm just repeating myself, but you know, I think I think GitHub is more flexible and allows different approaches to tasks.
Definitely agree to that. And it's open source. It's also worth something. Or at least to me personally, that's one of the bigger drawbacks to D-Work. And I wasn't quite aware that they stopped development on D-Work. But then again, basically, since I heard about it through Swarm, back then already, they weren't, not going to do any work on supporting Cardano. So I haven't seen too many developments anyway. So them stopping doesn't really make that much of a difference, but yeah, good stuff. I mean, as long as Treasury can work with it, of course, like that's, that's the big dependency for me personally. Like, if that's not working, then we'll have to figure something out. But sounds optimistic so far. Any questions in the room on this? Or remarks, compliments, applause, wild ideas? Alright, then I'll move to the next topic. And that's real-life events. Basically, yeah, sending over folks to events is quite nice, but how to really go about it? Because, I don't know, there's some pilots. We had BGI24 in Panama, being the big one so far. And now we've got AGI24 in Seattle coming up and ADN in Buenos Aires. This is, so far, all three of these have been supported through the, by the foundation as well, at least partially. Yeah, events are expensive, so this brings the question, how do we even go about this? Like, for BGI24, for example, the conversations came out of reserve, but that's not a sustainable way of going about it. So yeah, I figured it would be good to have some some conversation about this. What do you guys feel like? Should we, should we even be sending people to events, or should we just figure like, waste of money? Let's not do it altogether? Should we have a, you know, maybe some, some events workgroup that might request budget for it? So we have some numbers to go with? Yeah, I don't know, I just basically found myself always thinking like, yeah, technically, we could get some budget from the reserves, but that's just, yeah, that's, that's not the way to go about it, right? So I figured, let's give it a shot and yeah, put the topic to Town Hall. So if anybody has any thoughts on this, by all means, please share them. Or just sit in silence if you think it's a nonsense topic for Town Hall, that's also perfectly fine. I figured I'd give it a try. The crowd goes mild. Guillermo, you have your hand up, thanks.
Okay, I'm gonna I'm gonna break the silence, sorry. Just to start up the conversation, because I think it's valid to have this here. So let's go back in time, so BGI24, personally, it was a great experience professionally was also yeah, encouraging, inspiring. And I think in the human aspect, it raised so the bond we have between the people that attend there, it got stronger. We have more commitment, I don't know, it's probably a personal situation, but I think it's something that, so the ambassadors represent pretty well the community. We are really committed to the vision and mission, so probably if there were somebody that really represent Singularity Net in the BGI, for example, it were, it was the core team of ambassadors. The task we develop from very, very important to irrelevant, just keeping the closed door or, you know, bringing coffee, we were there as a very strong statement for what we're doing here. So I definitely believe that, yeah, ambassadors should always be there. One or two, 10 to five, and that will depend on the budget. If we create a, if we just stupid, fast talking, what if quarterly we separate some Treasury source for every BGI? And which, who goes? Well, it will depend on different variables, from visa to location to, and then we draft this and we make it random selection. And well, having a wider discussion on this topic will be, will be great. But I believe it's something that, yeah, definitely ambassadors on every single event.
Thanks a lot. And yeah, you're right, it's a, it's a big topic. I don't have any expectations of like getting to a conclusion, of course, in this Town Hall, but thanks a lot. Vanessa?
Yeah, one thing I think we probably do need to do is think ahead quite a lot. Maybe we should even compile a list of upcoming conferences, because one of the big barriers is getting a visa. And obviously, it depends where it is. But if people need time to get a visa together, people shouldn't be excluded because of like where they happen to live and whether it's hard for them to get a visa to the country where it is. So yeah, just give them more time. And I think also we should probably look at virtual participation. Most conferences have some kind of virtual participation. And we should kind of look into what we can do meaningfully with that. And maybe kind of look at smaller events as well as bigger ones and have a range, because the smaller ones are cheaper, aren't they? And often in weird places.
Yes, on weird places, cheaper on tickets, yes, for sure. On flight tickets, doesn't matter, which in practice tends to be a big cost of the total. Of course, the ticket prices for the events are way cheaper. Yeah, I quite agree on what you say, the timing of visa. We bump into this with AGI24, for example. Yeah, it sucks if that's a factor that limits. Yeah, that's to prevent that, I fully agree there. And the same on virtual participation, actually. If you, for example, on AGI24, this is an event organized by ourselves, so this gives a lot of freedom, right? We can very easily step up, for example, from AI Ethics workgroup and say like, well, we're going to host breakout rooms or have like people able to sign up for fishbowl interviews, stuff like that. That's relatively straightforward. If you're the organizer, you can just, you know, shine some light on it and get some, how to say? Get some visibility, basically, for external events that might be a bit harder, not impossible. Did I see somebody raise a hand or? Well, if anybody has some comments on this, feel free to speak, of course.
Oh, I'm gonna jump into, to mention something in the ADN. So this is something that just popped up last week. And probably is a good initiative for everyone to search around their location, their country, or their region for specific events. And reach out to the foundation through the ambassadors, or either way, to bring awareness of this event and to present a short proposal on why, how, how much it will take for one of the ambassadors to be there. So the ADN event is something that is is sponsored by Cardano Community and is happening in the 31 of July in Buenos Aires. I didn't even, I knew about it, but I didn't have even the intention to go. Why? Because, you know, with too much family, it's cold down here. I was trying to, yeah, to put my focus on some other things. And also, I need to travel, okay? So somebody brought the awareness of this, of this event to the foundation, and it was the opposite around. So the foundation reached us, they beat us and they say, hey, there is this event, so Charles is going to be there, Ben was invited, he's not going to be able. So we will be good, what you, are you guys available to go and represent us? And yeah, we present, it was a 20-minute work with Peter would put the numbers of what we need, and we are going to be there on the 31. Represented not only the Singularity Net, but also this crazy enterprise that is the ambassadors. And we will try to do it in both languages, so we'll create content and we put an idea of actions. And it's an event that is not even ours. So that not just to put it out, just a case, but probably there's something going on in Asia or or African continent or Europe, or some of us there close. It would be good to, yeah, to be there, to scream out.
Yeah, I couldn't agree more. I was happily surprised to see this unfold, basically. Just kind of, to me personally, at least, felt like being thrown in our laps almost. But yeah, it's amazing. But that does bring me to, basically, this was done by, I believe it was Mauro asking, Asknet Foundation. And yeah, then this is how it kind of evolved, like instead of doing sponsorship or having a speaker present. This was cooked up as a good alternative and yeah, so that kind of, it's a bit of a recurring theme for AGI24 as well. I don't know the exact numbers, but there's a substantial amount of the total costs get paid by the foundation. And that kind of makes me wonder like, how should we go about it? Like, should we have like a quarterly allocation for like events? This will take from all other workgroups, as we know, as we've seen in the past budgeting rounds. Yeah, the budgets are pretty tight, so to me, it feels a bit, well, I'm not even sure how to say it. I'm not sure if it's correct to just like, say like, well, for every quarter, we reserve 5K or just a number, but for example, to potentially send people to events, like, I'm not sure if that would make sense or if, yeah, what an alternative would be. And the money does need to get, come from somewhere, right? Unless people are like local, local. Yeah, then it's just very cheap and it's, it's no problem. But at the moment, people need to travel and need to sleep somewhere and of course, you eat, stuff like that, you know, the cost, they skyrocket very quickly. It's, it's a bit unfortunate, because it's just the most awesome thing ever to meet all these people behind the Zoom screens and see them in real life. Yeah, so it's a bit unfortunate that it's also very expensive. Anybody in the room has any thoughts on that? Maybe somebody who didn't speak yet? Feel free to. Also, didn't want to exclude you, Vanessa or Guillermo, but seeing you already spoke a bit. Trying to push others, feel free to. I'll skip putting people on the spot. Alright. Yeah, I was just thinking like, if I put it in Town Hall, then the how-to budget thing, we get it sorted out and we can just send people everywhere, but that was a bit optimistic, of course. Yeah, in a way, I find myself, it's about the reserves as well. It's like, yeah, we have them. Just for context, it's about half a year's worth of funding, so it's like, I don't know the exact number, but I would say 300,000 to 400,000 tokens, which is a very substantial amount. And also would be a shame to waste. And I do think so far, we did really well not spending much of that reserve. At the same time, if we're bumping into budgetary issues, well, that's, in my mind, that's what the reserve is for, to solve those. But so far, we've been using it, well, first of all, we barely used it. But we did use it, for example, on the BGI24 event. Yeah, maybe it's too big of a topic to properly address right now, but yeah, we just have some question marks there. I figured, let's share it. See what comes back. Let me quickly check chat. Events, I see events popping Events, I see events popping up. Goa Lask in Las Vegas. Yeah, that's a, a decent example of, of ticket prices and how silly these can go. The, on, I personally think it's, it's quite silly for eight hundred fifty for a one day event. And the one below that, um, actually here in Amsterdam, I could bike there, it saves some flying, also six hundred twenty euros. It's crazy numbers to me, but yeah. Yeah, it's cheap, it's even, it, it is cheap, I saw relative, I guess, right?
I mean, I think some, some conferences do have like free places for people who are skint. So sometimes going as an individual rather than sponsored by an organization can be cheaper.
Absolutely. Yeah, yeah, um, couple of weeks ago, uh, Ben was speaking also in Amsterdam, also had an eight hundred dollar ticket event. But then because he's a speaker, there's, uh, five bonus tickets, let's say. So was able to just go there and, and not pay eight hundred. But I'm not used to these prices, man, that's, that's crazy to me. And yes, you would be welcome to, uh, sleep here, saving on some, uh, overnight costs for that. Okay, clearly earlier I was joking, I didn't expect to fully figure out, uh, how to budget for this, uh, stuff. But I, I do think, um, keeping an eye open on future events, potential future events, and that at least alleviates the, uh, as you mentioned, Vanessa, the, the, the timing of, um, visa procedures and, and that being a limiting factor. Because it doesn't have to be if you're in time. All right, um. I think I'll skip the final check on the topic because it seems, uh, not much input for now, but the, the, I do want this to be in, uh, basically an open topic. If you have any thoughts on it, do feel free to speak up. Also on Ambassador General or, um, for AGI twenty four specifically, we have a Discord channel. Maybe we need an events, I, I, we may have an events, uh, I don't use it often, as you can hear. I think we have an events, uh, channel, so highlighting potential events there would be good. All right, um, then another fun topic would be, um, the participation on the consensus procedures. Um, I should have, uh, tracked the exact numbers. But it was, uh, generally felt during the last round of consensus checks that, uh, participation was low. Uh, we opened up from, uh, let me say the numbers correctly. Forty-one to fifty-three, uh, core contributors during the last, um, consensus round. Uh, however, at the first, um, iteration of that, I believe we had about twelve to fourteen, uh, people. And, and these numbers, I'm not reading up from the screen, I'm just, uh, they're coming from my mind, but I think it was something like that. Then on the second round, where the proposals that didn't receive, uh, full consent. On the second round, for some proposals, we only had four people replying. And that does bring the question at some point, like, shoot, we have a minimum. Um, what does it even mean if only four people take a look at it? Is that enough? Can we proceed? Should we not proceed? Should we figure this out for next quarter? Um, and I do think figuring this out for next quarter is, is the last, uh, or the, the least we can do. Um, so yeah, this is not really me just arguing for we need a quorum or like a minimal amount of, of people uh, accepting something before it can be accepted, um, but yeah, I do want to open up this conversation of how do we go about it? So once again, I'll throw it to the room if anybody has any thoughts. Feel free to share.
I was just wondering if there's any core contributor, well, I can see there's a few core contributors in the room. If you didn't vote and you feel comfortable, not vote, um, take part in the consent process and you feel comfortable to say why, that would be really interesting.
Yeah, Colina, fair.
Um, yeah, I just, I didn't feel that I qualified at the time is the only reason I didn't, uh, go forth with that. I do remember looking at all the documents, though.
I don't have the full core contributor list top of mind, uh. Good check if you were, uh, qualified for it, um. Uh, don't do it right now, but okay, okay, fair. Anyone else who was able to, could potentially vote but decided not to? Maybe that's, uh, too much of putting people on the spot. We maybe feel like, it's whatever, as much, as long as people, as, as long as some people check and, and vote, we're good, or? Yeah, Colina?
No, I agree with you on the quorum idea. I think there needs to be some type of numbers in order to be able to like quote pass something, don't you?
Yeah, in itself, um. Yeah, the some number part, sure, I can agree with that, um, immediately brings the question, what amount? And yeah, if that means people are, um. Like, that's the thing, I, I, I don't want people to be forced to vote for something they, they wouldn't fo- care about, like, it doesn't make any sense. Like, you, you force people to, to read something they don't care about and then vote because they, like, let's say you would make it mandatory, for example. Uh, not suggesting that, but that would be the extreme, right? Putting it, uh, to mandatory voting. Yeah, then you just get people not caring about it, not barely reading it and not really voting just because they have to, and yeah, that's, that's not the way to go. And I, I kind of feel the quorum approach is pretty close to that, like, what, what would you do if you don't get the quorum, like? Do, do another round and then the same people would still not vote? Can you change?
Um, yeah, so I have a quick, um, suggestion on that because I've been thinking about it. And I believe, given that we have a total number of fifty-three contributors, there should be a specific quorum for any proposal passed, technically. Uh, another way for us to make this a, a bit much cooler would be probably to, um, have a POAP, just a proof of participation, no, no value, not just something that gets minted to anybody that votes, basically, so they can actually understand that their participation is being, uh, I mean, it's been seen and recognized and maybe in the future, that would mean something. Maybe we say, oh, if you've been voting from twenty twenty-four, blah, 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 hey, you get a special or something. But for now, if we put a POAP on it that highlights who actually voted, not what their vote was, but who you voted. I mean, it would, um, it satisfies it to a point and make people a bit more interested, in my opinion.
Yeah, fair, I can see that, uh, can see that happening. Um, also, okay, let's go by hands, Guillermo.
Yeah, so a question to start, so the numbers again, sorry, uh, from the first iteration to the second, that's, that's what we discussed.
Um. Well, the problem was more evident during the second iteration this time, but I, I, I think the discussion is, is broad in that sense for both. Any, any vote, let's say.
So, fir- first iteration, how many votes do we have? Or engagement?
I'll need to grab the document in front of me just a second.
Seen or nineteen for some, I think, that was like the top.
So I'm sorry to bother you with this because I'm just following the, the, the process, uh, the thinking process. So we, so, because the second iteration is not a vote already, is drawing concerns and following concerns. So all the attention is drawn to, so for example, there was, there were, in the one that I have a continuity, R and D have two concerns and Latam have one. So that means one vote from the whole, I don't know how many um, needs concerned. So then it's, it's a second phase. It's not, it's not a voting already, it's, it's a concern state, consensus stages, that we addressed in a different manner. So we, because it's not a voting, you need to bring solutions to these concerns, answers, uh, address the issues. Uh, and if you don't, you don't get the consensus on, on these governance calls. So we, but that's, that's another situation, we are out of it. Kitchen now, which is, it's not voting, it's just, uh, filling the gaps, yeah, bringing responses to, to those concerns. Um, that's why I was asking the first, uh, uh, engagement of the first iteration, because that's the one we should.
That, that, that does make sense, the, in a way, you could even, I was thinking about this earlier today, and it's kind of weird that we allow everybody to participate in the second round. In a way, you would, it would make sense to me, like, if you didn't participate in the first round. Yeah, you then raise a concern in the second round, it's like, yeah, come on, just join the first round, so the, the process can keep going, right?
Right, right.
Um, Canichia, I'm not sure if that's an old hand or a new one, but if it's a new one, feel free to.
Oh, no, it's, uh, it's the old one, but I, I do resonate with what, um, this guy said, um, to a point, I resonate like, I feel like Guillermo is right there, I mean, once, like, the iteration has actually dropped down to the concern. And as people really don't feel the need to go back again. But I think it's more about the education right now, the co-contributors need to understand basically that having the concerns being brought up is a need for them to actually take a closer look at the proposal. And, you know, after that has been done, then if, you know, let's say, for example, uh, first iteration has, um, twenty people voting and, um, three people saying no. And in the second iteration, you have, uh, the same twenty people voting and three people saying no again, then it might be uh, subjective reason why, maybe it's the same three people with the same concerns and others count, it's to help us highlight stuff, but I feel like it's going to be quite a task, to be honest, to get in the core contributors, uh, engaged while also stating the fact that the voting itself is not mandatory. So, uh, which is why, I mean, I suggested the POAP thing, it's be a really catchy thing because I feel, I mean, with SWAP, it was, I mean, this is a different project, but it was really, really good way to understand that, uh, the old governance and the old participation being minted and was being, you know, given proof of participation, which you can show at any point. And people actually feel more inclined because they understand there is not just a yes or a no, there's actually a, uh, bigger clause to that and, you know, it affects other operations within the program. And, you know, gets them a bit more closer, they get over time, care more about the program, which at that point, we don't even need to say the voting or the consensus process is mandatory, basically.
That's an option, uh, that's for sure. Vanessa?
Yeah, I'd be a bit wary about mandatoriness, but to what we were saying before about like if somebody comes in, can people come in on the second iteration? And why the hell didn't they just vote the first time? There's all sorts of reasons why people might miss a vote, like if they're busy or whatever, but I actually think part of it, and I, of course, I'm gonna say this because I'm me, is about documentation. Because if we share the meeting where concerns are raised, then people who vote, who didn't like contribute to the consent process last time, might look at that and go, oh, yeah, I never thought of that. Hmm, that's a concern. And it just feels like we have these, these meetings to discuss the issues that people have raised and we don't really, you know, we need a really nice succinct summary or context setting that we can put out, or the issues raised with this, this and this. You know, because sometimes I look at the issues that people have raised and it's quite opaque. And you've got to look through a lot of documents to work out what exactly they're saying. So yeah, it feels like sharing the concerns a little bit more. The only concern I have with that is like, would it make, um, proposals or whose budgets who have not been agreed to feel a bit hounded? That's the only worry I have.
Yeah, fair. Uh, and, and just, uh, for the record, I looked it up, uh, first round, uh, the first iteration, the highest number of, um, total yes or no consents was nineteen. Uh, second round, the highest number was six. So that's a big decline.
You, you cut on my, uh, what was the first iteration? I couldn't hear.
Nineteen total.
Nineteen, on this Q three?
Yes, and that's for the highest, so there, there were some, um, only getting twelve. I think twelve was the lowest. But so we know at least nineteen different people participated.
Yeah, and on the first, I remember Q two, it was just six persons that participated in the first iteration or something like that.
Hmm, highest there was, let's see, thirteen, this is all visible on the quarterly, uh, budget sheet.
Yeah.
Yeah, there was, uh, thirteen was the highest for, for one proposal.
Okay, uh, uh, okay, because not, okay, not. Okay, um, so that's something we need to probably address. And the other thing that, again, this is our perspective on the process also, even we, we are not in governance or treasury or also there's, I noticed something, uh, not only in our, in the, the ones that participate in operations, but also in today's governance. Um, when concerns are addressed and on the second iteration, proposals can change quite substantially. So and so that will bring the question, what people consents of the beginning is not what is brought in the second iteration. So, and that's, and that, uh, and I'm saying that, again, not discussing on or to pointing to, towards others' proposal. And, and I can see that, that, uh, ourselves in R and D or Latam, they change for, they evolve, I, I see it as an evolution, but also they change, uh, quite substantially.
Yeah, very true. Also, uh, just calling out something in chat because I, I think it's, uh, quite a factor, um. Vanessa mentioning, uh, sorry to read out your comments in chat, if you want to speak, I, I do think it's important, that's why I'm calling it out. Uh, but if you want to, you can also verbalize it.
Yeah, I was just saying, I think we did rush it a little bit this time. I think we did to an extent the last time, but even more so this time. And I just think we were a little bit overexcited because we got the budgets in, um, in time. And we were just like, yeah, let's not drop the ball now, let's, let's hurry it through, but yeah. It felt hurried to me.
Yeah, I did reply, I'm partially guilty there myself, that's, I do think that's, that's true. Um, some of the timelines we put allowed for two days of updating proposals. Not the right amount of days for updating a proposal, I feel. Um. Yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know about that because hitting your, yourself with a hammer right now. So we, we achieve, what have we achieved? We've, wait. Great, understanding, uh, results on deadline, on the deadline. Uh, we were able to go through the process without, without, nobody losing their heads. So I think that we should, boy now, it's a good, uh, outcome. Um, I, I addressed this, uh, several times. It was kind of stressing, uh, ten, time, when we have the process already built, it will be easier. As we have templates that we have ways to communicate, because I, I, I agree with Lani, where some of the girls don't have that already figured out. Uh, starting with a link from, from Canichia's, uh, writers group on quarter two, that it was unfindable. Now he addressed that, so in this situation, he did it, uh, differently. Not only we addressed good deadline, we, we achieved, uh, consensus. And, uh, as I've said on the R and D, uh, particularly, that is a tough one. It brought a lot of light. Fuck it, it, it is, it is, it is, uh, and it brought discussion internally, but it brought light, because we were, oh. Okay, yeah, we, we have a concern here, yeah, it's, it's valid, so we should address it. And, uh, and I think it did the same, uh, in all Gitsa work group. So what we should, uh, get better for next one? So what we should, uh, get better for the next one? I know, but timeline is something that would work, so.
Yeah, for sure. Yeah, I think there's, uh, you're right, and then putting it into a bit of context of like the progress over the. I think this is the fourth time, uh, I mean. I have the quarterly sheet in front of me, it is the fourth time we work with quarterly budgets. Uh, but if, just for fun sake, if you check out the Q four, the twenty twenty three, the page. There's nothing, there's just numbers, it's like. Treasury, twenty thousand, strategy, four thousand, process, eight thousand, incubation, twenty thousand. It's like, okay, this is the total, let's fit it, so it fits the total budget, bam, here's your budget. We come a long way, you know, um. So in Q one, you can see not all of the work groups have a proposal, um, some have a quarterly report. This is slowly shifting, you know, so the, yeah, I I do think it's important to, uh, to also recognize that we're. Where we're coming from and that where we're going. So I don't mean it all doom and gloomy, um. Yeah, and also, as Vanessa is, uh, pointing out. There are quite some objections being made that are somewhat nitpicky, um, it's of course a subjective topic, um. But some, um. Well, as as Vanessa puts it, some thinking on what counts as a valid objection, uh, I I think we can, yeah. Save ourselves quite some time there as well, um, sometimes. Work groups are forced to address things where you feel like. Yeah, doesn't really add much to address this concern. So then technically, you're just trying to get rid of a concern, but. You could save everybody some time if you have some, uh, context setting on what's a. Proper, uh, concern, so, yeah, I do feel, uh, do feel that makes a lot of sense, Vanessa. That's also not the first time you bring this up, of course, but it's it's quite relevant in this topic. All right, I see the clock moved past the slot already, that's a punishment for starting ten minutes late. Um. Yeah, clearly, same as sending ambassadors to real life events, this is another topic to finalize in in one tunnel session, it's it's an ongoing topic. But, um. Well, a quick check in the room, anybody has some some further considerations on this, and keep them somewhat short if possible. But don't keep them for yourself, share them. All right, um. Yeah, I said, uh, treasury channel, um, would be the place, I feel, for for keeping this, uh, topic going, because this is something. We're almost there in this round, uh, but then we'll have, uh, close to two months of not discussing budgets. Um, I do feel we should use some of the time of of the, you know, doing the next iteration. Getting more learning and experimenting more, figuring stuff out, more getting better. Yeah, agreed, uh, next iteration will be better, not, uh. That's hopefully gonna be a truth for, uh, the coming years. All right, um, that's was pretty much the agenda, um. Noting we are over time, in theory, there's a bit of space I want to give for somebody bringing up a. Short topic or a short question or a short introduction. Not mandatory, but there is space for it. As you can see, I completely botched the next tunnel meeting, that's not, uh, one hour ago, that would be, uh, one week from now, minus one hour. I've seen no hands raised, so I think it's a wrap for now. Then, uh. I'd like to thank everybody for being here and sharing your time and your ideas. And, yeah, hope to see you on one of the many upcoming community calls. I think there's four for tomorrow, so you won't have to be bored, I think there's even five for, uh, Thursday. Three for Friday, so full schedule, as always. And if not in one of the community calls, hope to see you in Discord. Thanks again. Cheers.